She wasn't able to do that.
Call us back the order and to clarify to folks that that was action item F that we have tabled, but still is action item G, I think it's worth talking about even though we would likely do the same thing with it. So let's have discussion on action item G, board policy, state of regulation, 5116.1, intra district transfers.
I have one comment and only one. Is that the numbering is wrong? So on page one, we crossed out number one in all of the copy on number five. And then the next item is number four.
The number one copy has a right.
Pardon me? A clean copy?
Oh.
That's interesting, yeah.
I just thought.
I think actually it was just a re- or.
But the numbering is still wrong in the clean copy as I read it for one and two. Those are related, A and B, and it seems like they should be integrated differently.
Okay.
Right, it was two.
It should be two, it should be A.
But I do notice that we have the word priority in intra policy, but not in charter policy.
So maybe we ought to look at that since we were so concerned about.
I think that's okay.
I think in this one, it's identifying all of them as priorities.
Well, and it's also you're not saying who you're going to select to come here from outside the district or.
Just shuffling around with them.
The district. Right, you're saying, oh, if your sibling goes to the July School, you can attend that school too.
That makes sense.
You know what I mean? I don't think it runs into the same concerns, but we can check for sure.
Okay, I have no other questions.
I had one question on timing, and I may have missed it. I wrote it, a note, and I couldn't figure it out. I think in the intra district, sorry, in the inter-district timeline, this will all kind of have a timeline. We're really clear about the response date. Here we have an application date, but do we have a response date? And do we need one?
We should probably say within X number of weeks because it strikes me that this policy has a lot of conditions which could lead a parent to apply for an intra district transfer in the middle of year. Most namely student safety.
Right.
There were some legal requirements about persistently dangerous schools, which again, thankfully, I am under the strong assumption that we'll never have to worry about that here. But we can certainly look at the timelines again, and, you know, I think creating that one document will help us compare and contrast.
And figure out where we need to.
If we need to add something here to be clearer about when those who do apply for an intra district, for intra district enrollment are made aware of whether that application has been approved or not, pending obviously space.
And the other big difference there is that that's a decision that's made administratively. And when it's made, it's made other than through, there's not a board appeal, there's, they can, there can be complaint process. Is that right?
We don't have appeal language in the, yeah, in the intra.
Yeah. Are there any other questions about this policy?
I'd just like to have a review by.
Yeah, same thing. Well, from the timing and the criteria we've just discussed, and then I brought up that process question. Of appeal. Public comment? Okay.
Is it tabling?
We're tabling. The same request for observations about timing, criteria, and process. Okay. Well, now we have the final action item for tonight, a board policy that we've also discussed before. Board policy 110, the district nature area with Carol Brown discussing it. And I think we'll start with Carol.
Thank you. I'm just going to recap a little bit of the background and then I can talk about the proposed policy. Our current policy states very clearly that the nature area is for the use of Arinda students, except that it is first and foremost a site intended to benefit the district. And Jason and I thought that that's fine, but it really is an educational site, so we want it to basically be considered an educational site to benefit the students. And the vision that we had, and just to clarify, we worked pretty closely with the Friends of the Wagner Ranch Nature Area and a number of constituents, and tried to create a vision that would make everybody happy. So we want, currently, the nature area is being used by grades one, three, and five, I think. But we would like the nature area to be available to all of our students every year as a laboratory for all kinds of instruction, not just the current programs that are there like Native American Days and First Thanksgiving and all of that. We talked with the science, what is the name of the committee, Kathy? The science?
The Science Articulation Committee.
Yeah, the Science Articulation Committee, and they were very, very excited about potentially opening the nature area for outdoor education and the sciences, as well as the arts and social study and history. And they came up just brainstorming with so many amazing ideas. So the vision is to offer the nature area as something unique and educational for all of our students, for all of our subjects, and all of our community as well. We could offer it as, you know, a camp outside of Milton Night Field Trip for the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. We could offer programs for senior citizens and neighboring districts as well. So the advantages of that would be already, two other school districts have expressed interest in using the nature area as an outdoor classroom for their students. And one of the things that has occurred to us is the district could charge usage fees for the programs for other organizations besides our students. So if Lockheed at Marotta wanted to use it regularly, they would be paying us a user fee. And it could be, it's not going to be a big profit maker or anything, but it could pay for itself. So what we were proposing is to develop a new collaborative oversight model in partnership with the Friends of the Wagner Ranch Nature Area. We could be, we could hold public meetings, invite the community to explore all of the options that are available to us and get more ideas. We would need to develop a curriculum and a program option, and we felt like Bayside is a perfect example of who to partner with in developing a new science art oriented curriculum. And we could look to our own art teachers and other teachers for developing a more arts oriented program. And we would propose meeting to review the strategic plan, which would be created by the board committee and other stakeholders, certainly the nature area, representatives from all aspects of the community. And we had hoped to have that done by this May, which probably isn't going to happen. But that's just a little bit of background for you, and I could hand it over to Jason to talk about the changes in the policy.
Yeah, we wanted to do that recap of the background and then actually walk quickly through the policy and recap. Because the board, the last board that had this conversation didn't have some of the current board members on it. We're in the audience, but we thought it would be useful, since it's been a little while, to recap all of that. Before I do it, I do want to thank Carol in particular again for the many hours spent thinking about this and reaching out into people in the community who spent time talking and thinking about really a creative, new next chapter for the next, for the nature area as a beacon resource for the district. The policy changes are, there was a policy in place, adopted at a different time and a different context for the nature area. The main changes are a handful, and then I'll talk about the main topics we talked about in the last board meeting. First, we explicitly add to the policy that preservation of the natural and historical resources of the nature area are a goal of the policy. We create a standing oversight committee that includes all the stakeholders potentially that use the nature area, volunteers, the teachers, staff, community members, outside organizations like Bayside and others. We wanted that to be a board oversight committee, with reference to the board committee section. It's the language used in the section, standing oversight committee, that includes board membership, but is also the umbrella. It lets each of the partners, the curriculum committee worrying about curriculum, the nature area who's preserved this space, and all these others to bring those perspectives and actually put together a strategic plan. I think when Carol and I first started doing this, we thought, oh, we'll sit down with people and we'll come up with a plan. And we realized, well, no, that's not our job. Our job is to create a catalyst and a framework so that people can come together, think really creatively, and probably bring up ideas that we couldn't imagine as a board. So that's the purpose of the oversight committee, and the charge is similar to the charge that we have for our parcel oversight committee is they're overseeing, but they're also reporting on an annual basis based on the strategic plan. We expanded the curriculum purposes, working with Kathy and the suggestion of teachers for the use of the nature area. And then we also included funding sources that, you know, the bill policy, simply making the choice point that, gee, this costs a lot, and gee, we don't want to lose money on it. We think there are real potentials for user fees, like Carol said, but even more broadly for grants and other sources of income. There are a lot of potential costs, as Mr. House has pointed out before, involved with opening up the nature area further. That will cost a lot of money, but I think there are organizations and people really interested in seeing a resource like this succeed. And if we reach out to those people, we may find great sources of funding, grants and otherwise. So those are the basic changes to the policy. When we had our last board discussion, our discussion focused on three of those changes. First, whether a goal should be preserving the natural resources at the nature area. Second, how much prior, how much flexibility do you leave in the policy itself for future uses? We know there are going to be financial tough times coming ahead. The last policy was very explicit that it should be for district uses to leave to the board to determine the time this policy has more about its purposes. But this new version changes that language somewhat duly.
Can you point out the changes?
Yeah.
Because I couldn't take the original revision.
Got it.
Actually, when I looked for that, I looked, I tried to look it up, but we only had the PowerPoint on that. We didn't have the policy as part of the, I guess I didn't see it.
In August, no, that's absolutely right. And I actually just recognized that that additional line to the end, didn't we add a line to, running out of the last line?
In the whole policy?
In the whole policy says may include user fees, grants, and other sources of income. Wait a second.
Funding identified under this policy.
Yes. Oh, there it is, Julie, it's switched around. And it doesn't show bold, but it should. In the second, the last paragraph, as the nature area is a valuable asset to the district, the board supports.
Oh, yeah.
We got rid of only, those activities that protect the district's interest in maintaining the property for outdoor education and the goals and purposes of this policy, that was language added before, and then we added it should be bold and future district objectives. So that we more, we explicitly note here the conditions may change, which means the board may have to revisit this policy. So that was an addition made to this. And then the third area we had discussed was the nature and composition of the board committee. And there was a question of should this be a board committee? Should there be more membership on it or not? We didn't reach resolution on that. The current draft envisions it as a board committee with two board members and a set of bylaws that are similar to what we have to be parcel oversight committee, but that's certainly open for discussion, and we had discussion on that before. On balance, it's Carol and my idea that we think it's worth having a standing board committee that we treat as are others, that we may rotate on, but that's certainly something we can discuss. Okay, there we go. Anything else we should add on presenting this before we start discussing, Carol?
Yeah, probably. I have been trying very hard to get a meeting set with Marguerite Young, who is our area representative from East Bay Med. I do know that there is an easement by East Bay Med and by PG&E. East Bay Med is, holds an easement on the property as watershed. PG&E for some other reason, which I have not been able to determine. But I just wanted that, to throw that into the pot. Because that might affect our ability to develop or do anything. I don't think it will affect our ability, you know, we're not looking at developing it. No, but. We, if we're going to have anybody but our students use it, it must be made, made accessible. And that's what's going to cost money. And we feel with some confidence that there are a few people that we can approach who would be very admirable to.
Paying for those improvements.
Paying for those improvements with, at worst with a small copay on the district's part. But I have never been able to get a meeting with Marguerite to find out if East Bay Med has any kind of limitations on it at all. I don't think anybody would object to making it made accessible.
But the terms of the easement. Yeah.
I mean, if we did a title search, we could see what the easement's on. And when the specifications of easements, then we would know what they set for them, what they limit us or don't limit us.
That didn't occur to me at all.
I feel like, I feel like what, Carol, with that, with, there's a lot of homework, I think, to be done from the district standpoint, and the advantage of having an oversight committee is that Mr. House's first job when he's probably staffing this committee will be to do a lot of follow-up research like that, so we really understand what's possible. As opposed to us right now trying to say what to do.
Project what we might be thinking is possible.
Well, one thing, just looking at the folded language of educational venue for the benefit of the students that we would give in this district, of course, as a board member, I want to create a venue for our students primarily, but does that limit from then allowing other districts to perhaps use our facilities or pay to use our facilities?
That's a really good question, and we reformatted this so that the paragraphs do two different things. The first paragraph, the old policy simply said it was first and foremost Arinda resource. So we've kept that language, but the next one, as you'll see, drops the Arinda community. The second paragraph, first paragraph is about use of Arinda first. The second is, but we also recognize that it provides educational opportunities for the broader community, meaning community outside of Arinda. The word supports expanding to the broader community opportunities, blah, 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 and so on, through users fees.
And of course, our own students would also benefit from an ADA accessible environment.
Yes.
I have a question, and mainly discussions. I don't know if you want to just do questions right now, before we, and then we do discussion. I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, let's do it. Lots of questions.
Then my first, my question is about the things we're stewarding, is about the, if we have any idea what the cost would be to make it ADA compliant? And, and all the other things that would have to be done to make it really into a facility that we could use in the way that you're intending.
I believe we had an initial estimate of about $100,000.
So double that and double the end of time.
And I don't think that's something as a budget priority, we can invest as a district now.
Right, so I think clearly, and one of the things I was going to suggest, and I I wonder whether you need to put a language about a committee in there or just create a committee. But regardless, I think part of the charge has to be looking at the cost. Funding, cost and funding, right, because that's a critical component for creating this.
I actually think that the, if you'd like to, we can include that in the charge. Right now, it says the committee shall establish a strategic plan for adoption. We could define what a strategic plan is. Strategic plan includes several things, including sources of funding to open to the broader community.
Like I said, I don't know if you need to have the committee identified as part of your policy, or if we could just create a committee. You know, so.
That's true too.
I don't know that we've done that in other policies where.
That's a good question.
You know, the one question I would say is that when you put the language in about the committee, then it can become obsolete or outdated as the committee has been ongoing, or perhaps the committee takes care of its charge, and then it's, you know, so that's the one downside to putting a language in there that I can see.
Like I said, I think it achieves the same goal as creating the committee and not necessarily need to have it spelled out in the policy.
Well, I have a couple of questions about the committee, also just kind of following up on that. You know, talks about developing a strategic plan, but then there's nothing in there about, you know, revising the strategic plan in the future and what the process for that would be. You know, because obviously we, you have something in mind now in terms of just coming up with something that would be beneficial for the area, but what the process would be beyond that. And then also just separate question about the composition of, you know, who's going to be on that committee, whether or not it would make sense to have a member of the board from the Wagner Ranch Nature Area on there.
Oh, yeah.
It has generally teacher, inter-volunteer staff, that kind of thing, but I think it would be good to have that specifically in there.
That was a specific intention of ours, so I think it would be.
Yeah, that's what volunteers means, but.
Well, but it's not.
It's, but the committee will always say an outside entity that, I mean, just, you never know what, whether that entity will be in existence in 10 years. Like, I don't know, I think like the way you framed it, where you just said volunteers, I liked how broad it was because I assumed what you were saying included members from the, you know, friends.
The friends, exactly.
I don't know that you want to, what, some other group that all of that takes some role, you know, the Environmental Education Fund, but I'm making it up, but you know what I'm saying? You know, like why specifically identify a group?
Well, I guess my point is more just to look at initial oversight committee.
And like I said, maybe if you're removing this from the policy itself, then.
We could make it like.
Be a little more specific in, you know, who you're identifying at this point.
We could, I mean, that's, this is the balance, we're doing no specific, general. I think that the bylaws of the committee could have a lot of the specificity in it, and then it's completely changeable, like bylaws. But I think the reason to have the committee stated here that it exists is, one of the challenges with, I think, governance of the nature area in the past has been a lack of clarity of who's in charge. There shouldn't be. It's a district policy, but it's also a nonprofit that has maintained.
You're creating a committee that is clearly in charge.
Exactly, and that brings all the stakeholders together and gives everyone an opportunity to articulate the vision.
More creative.
That's, that's the idea of being specific about.
And what's important to me is the two words collaborative oversight.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's the district's nature area, and the district should have oversight over it. And we haven't been doing that, but we want, we want it to be more than just the school board, because I think that gets the board involved at a level of detail that we have no business being involved in. And so what I would like to see is absolutely a board member of the nature area on this committee with a representative from Bayside as well, community representatives, and a board member, all involved in the oversight of the very valuable, in teachers.
Yeah, I was going to say teachers, the curriculum committee.
That's very specific, and I don't feel like that's reflected in.
Yeah.
Well, and I still think, like, the first thing you have to figure out is how much does it cost and can you fund it? Because you don't really have a ton of money, you know, we're going to, I mean, to negotiate, I mean, I'm not going to bring negotiations into this, but look, we're, you know, we have limited resources.
We're not using our general fund monies to do this.
Yeah.
And we need to be cognizant of that, so I thought that one of the goals of this is to try to self-fund it in some ways through grants and things like that.
Yes.
So I do think that's an important first charge we're figuring, you know, for this committee to do.
Yes, and I think that's the way to think of it. There's, there's a chicken and an egg problem there, right? It's the first charge to see if this vision has any, has any possibility before you go and create a structure.
I mean, the vision is great, but have a favor.
But I think that it's quite possible, we're too much of an optimist to admit it, but it's quite possible that given current financial situations, given anything else we chat that we face, this is a great idea, but we're not going to be able to find our funding. That's really possible. But even if that were true, I think the challenge we've had with our relationship and our governance of the nature area is there hasn't been a collaborative model of oversight.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the whole idea is a great one. I mean, I do have concerns about making sure that we preserve the district's ability to do whatever it needs to do with that property at some point in the future, even though I think it would be a great environmental add and all these other things. But I give concerns that we can jump to when we're doing the discussion, but, but, you know, I don't know, I just think we really, we want to make sure we're paying for it, you know, with alternative sources. I mean, that's really going to have to be, could be, unless, you know, the state suddenly starts raining on me.
I just, I just wondered if you could elaborate on the discussions you had with Friends of the Nature Area? Because it seems to me that all of this is predicated on our being able to work with them. And I don't think that's always their ministry, so I just feel that we've talked to them.
Well, the, we have a representative in the nature area, and I'll say when we first.
I do.
When we brought up this policy last time, which included this, they enthusiastically endorsed. I hope we'll hear the same tonight, but I think in discussion we should hear from them. This was discussed with them earlier, about how do we create a place where we can all come together and discuss, and I think that was.
That's what I want to learn. I have to say that there have been many, many meetings.
That's true.
And they have all been really good dialogue, helpful dialogue, and very, very productive. So I think I could say that they all went very good. So I think I could say that they all went very good.
I just have one more question about, so the last sentence here, it seems like it's an add to other sources of funding identified under this policy. What is that intended to refer to? Is that just local funding? Because that was the only other funding that I saw in this, and I wasn't sure if there's anything else that was trying to get at.
Sponsorship from organizations that may be willing to pay to have the nature area. Pay for the ADA fees.
Well, and user fees.
And one of the things that I noted when we get to the discussion part, I'm trying to keep those two separate. You did say the board shall authorize the district to look to its funding partners. I was thinking maybe you need to change that to look to outside funding partners or something like that.
That's actually a good change.
To be broader.
Yeah, that's what we.
And then that sort of addresses Hillary's concern as well.
I think that's exactly right. The reason we had crossed out EFO and Parents Club was to do just that. But you're right, by saying it's funding partners, we have to say new funding partners.
Right, you want to go outside.
Yeah.
While we're.
Yeah. So I think you get rid of it's and you make it either funding partners or new funding partners.
Or outside or just funding partners.
I think just funding partners is better. Yeah, just a one name it's.
Okay, so I like what you were saying. Let's, there's a question. Should we have a little more discussion before we open up the public discussion or?
Public, unless there are more questions and then let's do our discussion.
All right. Any other questions then? Let's have our public discussion.
Oh, you're a great little question. I do want to say, Julie, I do appreciate you being sensitive to funding. Because like you said, we have limited funding coming from the state. It's not enough to cover our real basic needs, so I do appreciate that. I also wanted to say, I want to make sure that Arinda teachers, because we want teacher-driven change. It's the resource that teachers use here in the district. And when you have that committee, I want to make sure that teachers make up a majority of that committee. I, I, I do agree that we need to have other people in that committee, but I don't want to lose sight that it's a place where teachers take their children for them to explore and learn about outdoor education. So I'm not excluding other people from being in the committee, but I want to make sure that teachers aren't, it's not just one teacher. That we have teachers representative of all of our sites giving voice on that committee. Thank you.
More comments?
Well, I, let's see, this is.
Don't do my comments.
Excuse me? Oh, okay, yeah. Phil Hudson with Friends of Wagon Ranch Nature Area. This looks great. As I, I think one comment I have in terms of the, the funding and so forth, this is a whole new world that we're getting into, and we would love to start exploring. I don't know what we can do from here, but we've had a hard time even letting the parents know that it's not, still funded by the district. So.
Jill, can I ask you to come in the microphone? I'm having a hard time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much.
We'd just love to work with you on something like this, this or something like it. My only point about the funding is it's been very difficult for us under the old sort of rules and so forth, to even get parents to know that, that the nature area programs were not funded by the district. We've got a lot of things going on, and they write a check for the supplies and, and it's been, we, we, it's been all we can do is just say, you know, yeah, but we're paying for the staff and not. So I think if, if we get together and start opening up the possibilities, who knows, you know, what we can do, where the funding might come from. But anything in this direction, we love. I hope Kathy agrees.
Hi, I'm Kathy Garrett. I agree. So I'm the secretary of Friends of Wagon Ranch Nature Area. And as Bill mentioned, we have actually been trying for many years to have a collaborative relationship with the district that really brought in all of the teachers and members of the educational community. So this is very exciting to us. I can speak for the board in saying that we've all been thrilled, and we have another board member here, Colleen, who can also add her information to that. The site is so special as an environmental education resource. It is just amazing. And when Kathy Marshall brought all the teachers from Bayside, they were just astounded and so delighted to think that they could plan their curriculum to include visits to the nature area. And just this last week, at our New Year's celebration, one of my close friends who's a curriculum, science curriculum specialist in Mount Diablo Unified School District said, oh, I would love to bring teachers to the nature area for workshops, so we, we have the funds, we could do it. Just let me know who I talk with. So anybody who goes there, whether it's a parent, a teacher, a community member, lights up, sees the potential of the site. And as Bill alluded to, the fact we, we've struggled as a small board with about 400 donors who generously give 100 here, sometimes 520, to keep these third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade programs going. And we've always had the vision of expanding because OIS used to come for these programs too. And in years past, kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers at Wagon Ranch, because they're so close, bring their kids down. So this is wonderful news to us, and we would love to assist you in any way. And as, as Carol said, she and Jason have been meeting with us quite a lot in the last year and a half, which is really good news. And I won't say anymore because you can tell I'm enthusiastic, and I think it's a great trajectory, so thank you.
I just had one thought more about the funding and I was saying it's a brave new world. Before I got involved, the nature, and when the nature was part of the, the school curriculum, there was tremendous community support. I mean, there was, that, that structure that's built, I think it was like $30,000 or something. So if it's maybe not a new world, it's returning to the old, then we can see what kind of support we can get there, but there is a history there.
Any further comment in the public? May I have some discussion?
Okay, we're going to the first paragraph. That last clause, I still feel I'm maybe stating back and forth. There are two new board members who are here, but maybe sitting in another spot in this, in this room. You know, I'm just concerned that that, I mean, I, I don't disagree with the goal of trying to preserve the natural and historical resources of the nature area, but I don't like the idea of limiting, limiting it like that in the board policy. And I know it's, you're doing that intentionally, and I just, you know, personally think we either should delete that clause or, you know, modify it to say, I don't know, to the extent possible, preserve the natural and historical resources.
Well, in sort of making something ADI accessible might in some ways impact the.
No, I'm sorry, that is, we ultimately needed to use that site for a completely different purpose or sell it or whatever we needed to do with that other district when, you know, the bottom falls out and we have to do something drastic that I don't want to be limited by our board policy. I mean, that's the reason, really. And like I said, I, I agree with the goal and the desire, and I'm fully supportive of, you know, you know, I think there's a great vision that's embodied in this. I just don't, I just fear the limiting language, you know? So, you know, I'm fully supportive of it, but I just don't like the limiting language that sort of binds us.
So here's, here's a, 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 and I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I think we have to be really realistic about, we don't know what's coming financially for our district, except we know it doesn't look great. But right now, it says the board supports, current policy says it supports strategically-aligned curriculum-based instructional programs. So we're already saying we support programs, which, under what you're saying, we may have to reverse someday. So how's that any different than someday having to reverse?
But you're also deleting language that says it's the district's property to do with as it wishes or whatever, you know, I'm paraphrasing. So I mean, there is an intentional changing of the tone to.
That's true.
Make it, to, to limit what the district can do with the property. And I just, you know, personally, I'm only one board member, so I'm not three board members, but I personally am not comfortable with language in the board policy that restricts us in that way.
So I don't actually read it as restricting us. It is, the way this sentence reads, and, and I don't know what the intent was, but you're tying strategically-aligned curriculum-based instructional programs. And then I see it as twofold. Curriculum-based instructional programs that further the district's goals for student learning, and then curriculum-based instructional programs that preserve the natural.
Yeah, I'm reading it that way. I'm reading it as that the board supports preserving the natural and historical resources of the nature.
I think that's, yeah, actually, that's the way it's meant to be.
It's unclear, but.
But couldn't a future board in a dire financial circumstance?
They could, they could, but why, why restrict the board that way? Like, why not, like, that's what I'm saying, I want to say to be some possible preserve the natural and historical resources or.
And again, I don't think this sentence is.
Well, maybe if you did like a one and a sub one, a sub two, that'd be more clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it's clear, but.
Yes.
I still.
I think, Julie, you're concerned, I mean, I hear that, and I think we, I think that's the intent of what Hillary's saying, and I think that could be clarified. I think you're still concerned about second to last paragraph. Board supports. I know, but, but I think this speaks to that paragraph where we dropped the only and added future district objectives. You'd like to go farther than that and say something like, and future district objectives, should conditions change or should, I mean?
I actually, the change that I was thinking of for that, let's see, so where is it on? Okay, so that first paragraph, as the nature area is a valuable asset, the board supports those activities that protect the district's interest in maintaining this property for outdoor education. The goal and purposes of this policy. Why did you take our current?
It's, something weird happened. I think, I think something weird happened in that, that editing, because I, and future objectives, I can pull up the old policy, was something added. I'm not sure why current.
We're back, I want to come in there.
Was it? Okay, then we just.
Are we back down to the next to the last paragraph?
Yeah. Okay, no, maybe you want.
You know what, the change that I made to that, I turned it into two sentences. And I said, the board recognizes that the nature area is a valuable asset of the district, period. As such, the board supports maintaining this property for outdoor education, the goals and purposes of this policy, and current and future district objectives. It's a pretty subtle change, but, you know, it does.
Can you read it one more time?
The board recognizes that the nature area is a valuable asset of the district, period. As such, the board supports maintaining this property for outdoor education, comma, the goals and purposes of this policy, comma. Incurring in future district objectives. Preserving the future district objectives. But again, you know, like that, it's sort of the interplay between that first, that last clause and the first paragraph. And this one, and, and like I said, I'm fully supportive of trying to do this, and if we can fund it by other means, you know, I think it could be an incredible resource, not just for Arinda, but for, you know, lots of other students who don't have access. And that's, I think it's a great thing, I'm a hundred percent in, in support of it. I just don't want to take away. Exactly, I just don't want to tie our hands. And I know we can change the policy at a later date, but I just don't like the idea of taking away.
But given the other language in the policy, that clause and that preserve natural and historic resources of the nature area is maybe redundant. Don't we just put a period in?
Well, that was one of my thoughts to just take that out.
Because we do state very similar thoughts later in the policy. Maybe we just, I don't know, we work hard on it all the time.
Maybe that I will support that.
Julie, can you, can you read me the change you wanted one more time in the next to the last paragraph?
To this one that we were just talking about?
Yeah.
The board, it's, it's, the board, the board recognizes that the nature area is a valuable asset of the district.
Okay.
As such, the board supports maintaining this property for outdoor education, the goals and purposes of this policy, and courage and future district objectives.
I don't have any objection to that.
No, it's pretty similar.
Yeah, will you send that to Kathy? What I was trying to say, because if we say that there, do we really need to say that clause?
You know, the first clause, it does have a different purpose. I think what Hillary was putting her point on is that we were trying to recommend, the language is actually reflected from language from the Friends mission. And it's trying to say that teachers are the ones who are going to develop curriculum-based instructional programs based, and the committee is already starting that work. And what the policy says is those programs should keep in mind that preserving the natural and the historical resources in the nature area are, you know, should be part of that program. In other words, we could get so ambitious.
And that focus on.
Preserving.
Focus on preserving, I mean, and do it like with the sub one. The board supports strategically-aligned curriculum-based instructional programs on this site. That's one, further the district's goals for student learning. And two, preserve.
I, I define.
I'm not sure there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Why don't you know that, Kathy?
I can remember that.
Kathy, Kathy, I'm texting you.
That's relative.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I think that leaves us with a little more discussion about the committee.
I guess I still, like, feel more comfortable saying the first thing that focuses on and.
Well, I don't know that, I like the first one because I think that educational content should be on education and that it should, while we do these new programs, we make sure that we're preserving the natural and historical resources, not that the focus of the program should be preserving the resources.
But I thought that's what we were saying.
I thought that was what you were saying.
I thought that was the change that we're making.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't.
That clause is modifying.
It is, but I'm, the word focus, I'm saying that the focus of an educational program could be on.
Art or something.
Art.
Not natural and historical.
Right.
But that in creating your art program, you wouldn't damage the natural and historical.
You don't chop down trees to create an art program.
Or you're not going to pave a big circle that everyone can sit in, or something like that.
That's what I mean. So the A, the one, two still accomplishes that. The word focus changes.
I see what you're saying.
Because then it limits.
Yeah, the committee then has said, oh, we can't do that because it doesn't focus on historical resources.
Biology and science, it's focused on art or.
Exactly.
Whatever.
It's not focusing on curriculum.
Exactly. And, but it does achieve making really clear that it's curriculum that focuses as opposed to one curriculum, sorry, I don't want to say highlight. It's to making the natural and historical resources a separate goal. This is tied to.
Preserving them, and so, you know, keeping them. Natural. Do you think this is? I think that change will make it so you can have a part of a program or a different kind of program using that beautiful space. But that, that program can't in any way be destructive to the environment. Right, because you, like I said, I don't think you want someone coming in and paving a circle, make it more comfortable for someone to sit or something, but would then destroy the environment.
Okay. This is my.
Okay.
So my next.
Yes, committee.
The board supports extending, sorry, no.
Let's go to the.
The board supports extending to the broader community opportunities to use the district nature area and preparing the. and preparing the facilities for these purposes."
Yeah, I think that's a better formulation.
That's the words that you have.
Yeah.
And I was concerned, have we found it here?
It's the last paragraph, it's the last paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so right there, I, what I had a concern about committing the district to preparing the facilities for extended educational purposes when we don't have the cost of doing so, which should be one of the goals of the committee.
Do you want to add, "if financially viable"? I'd very much support that, so that we're very clear that we're financially viable with additional funding.
I mean, my thought was to take out that last clause, but, I mean, what you're saying could work as well. Again, I just want to make sure that we're not financially committing ourselves, or like, policies.
To do something, you know.
We don't know the dollars, and we don't know the funding.
I actually think it would be cleaner to take that out, the "and preparing the facilities", because we know we have to do something to prepare the facilities.
For broader community opportunities, in a sense, it's redundant.
Fine with that.
Just want to remove that. To use the district nature area period.
Kathy, do you need to send that one to you?
Probably some of yours.
And then, actually, on that same point, not to add, but, Julie, instead of additionally, should we just say, "financial for support for such activities"? Rather than nay, you know, be a little more emphatic that they're going to have to come from other sources than...
I think, could we say, "it needs to be self-funding, or self-insufficient, or so"?
I mean, what about a "should"? Financial support for such activities should include user fees, grants, other sources.
Shall.
I don't, I don't want to prevent the district from spending a reasonable amount of money.
I don't think saying the word "should", sorry, I'll let you finish.
I guess I said "shall" instead of "should".
Yeah, I, I just wouldn't want this policy to totally restrict us. For instance, I have reason to believe that we could get corporate funding for making the nature area...
ADA compliant with a small payment.
A copay, a small reasonable copay.
Match.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's an act of good faith. I think it's a reasonable condition for a major grant. And this does stand to make some money in user fees.
But you know, Carol, I think we could say, "financial support for such activities", Hillary's going to "should", but even if you said "shall", "shall include", not "shall", and if you keep the word "include", not saying "shall only", but "shall include", because then we're saying, listen...
And do you need to say, "identify them through this policy"? Why don't we just say, "other sources of funding"?
That's fine.
Well, that was what I found confusing.
Yeah.
Right.
I think the intent there was to say that the committee would come on here, and therefore was identified, but I don't think that's necessary, just other sources of funding.
Are you getting rid of the word "additionally" also, or are you keeping it?
I think we should, right? Because that makes it clear, we're saying, the financial support has to come from external sources, at least in part. Majority, I give it.
So financial support for such activities shall include user fees, grants, and other sources of funding.
Yeah, and we're clearly directing that we need to look outside for funding. How that exactly works out, what sources of funding, we haven't analyzed internally. We may have internal funding. We got a more, we could use 40, Fund 40 funds, maybe, or developer fees, maybe, in some way. Let's not close the door.
On my end, we're talking about ADA compliance, but there will be other needs.
Exactly.
So it needs to be broader.
Yeah. Three?
That was it for me.
Except the board, except the committee. I think we have to resolve what, here's where I am on the committee. I, I actually get that a policy shouldn't be too specific on the committee, and that we should let that be in my laws, because that just allows us to develop it. But I'm, I'm still committed to naming that we have this new governance structure, because I think it will help solve all the relationship problems. And per pub, public comment, it brings together the volunteers, the teachers, and the entire curriculum committee role. And I don't think we have to increase...
Was the language in it, where, scroll back up to the...
Oh, I thought, I thought, I'm fine with this language.
No, what we were talking about, do you need to have it in identifying your board? Or would it just as a board decide to create this committee?
Well, I mean, now, I mean, if you leave it this language, it's more general. If you have it separate, when you're forming the committee...
Then you'd have to have...
Right, so you, so then you have something that's more specific in terms of how many teachers, how many, you know, what the actual composition is going to be.
This is just saying that the...
That should not be in the policy.
Right, I, I just wanted to understand where we were going from this to...
I just think this is important here, because it's establishing that that there must be collaborative oversight, and that there must be certain members of the community included. And that it's the committee's responsible to do the heavy, responsibility to do the heavy lifting.
Right, you do, yes.
That is not...
Well, and to do a stakeholder plan that draws on it, but it still says, "for adoption", but the board, so we're making really clear here, this collaborative model's going to come up with something, but then the plan has to come to the board for approval.
And so you're saying, in, when you're creating the committee, which I assume we'll have to bring back as a separate, with more specifics, will include that they need to be working at funding, sources, and costs, things like that, as part of their initial, uh, place, yeah.
Yeah, and that's where we need to have...
But I mean, it's more, when you, if this committee is ever disbanded, somebody's about to remember, oh, we've told them off, and the board policy to get rid of that.
Yeah.
You know, language, if you know what they're going to be complying.
But the day that happens is the day that, fricking, it's either two things. One, it's so created itself into something separate that it does something different over the day, fricking, we're talking about, either could happen.
But hopefully not.
I hope the first.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm good with those changes that I did text to Kathy.
Or Kathy.
I think it's exciting. I mean, I do think that as an opportunity for the district to develop this kind of site is very special. Most districts don't have this opportunity, and I think it's wonderful that we're finally moving forward to work collaboratively to build that and make it more accessible to more people.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's really exciting that we're moving towards opening this up to a broader community and really, you know, showing other areas what we have here. But, I mean, it could be such a great resource, this is hopefully, financially make it happen.
Exactly.
But I really do support, and I think we want to make clear that it's an if, that we can't afford, this could be a great asset, and maybe we'll make money on it, but we can't afford to take away from our core vision of doing this.
I think one of the things that struck me most when Julie and I went down to visit Carolyn's district was what she said to us about wanting to make this district a beacon, for how to do education for everybody. And I just couldn't help but think that the nature area is one of those things that could make us a beacon, and, um, I won't go any further, because I have crazy dreams of seeing the news hour.
Look there, I think you...
No, no, I just, seriously, I just, I had a dream the other night of somebody from the news hour coming out and saying, this is what creative people do. Anyway, so excited.
Keith, are you open to more public comment? Because there's been a lot of discussions since, earlier, public comment. Are we precluded to open to public comment again, or can we reopen to public comment?
You have the authority to reopen the public comment, and we're going to do your same...
Okay, then I'd like to do it, because I'd really like us to be able to have a full consensus on this going forward, so, further public comment.
I'm Charles Chaney, I'm president. Could also talk about ADA compliance.
Charles, could you come to the microphone, I'm having a...
I could use my teacher voice, which is much louder.
I appreciate it.
With all the talk about ADA compliance, if we open it up, it had me wondering that, just having that conversation, not admitting that we may need to have ADA compliance right now, because it's open to our students here at Arinda. I just want to be cautious, I think we need legal opinion on that, because it sounds like we don't know, because we're saying, if we open it up to other districts, we, we have to have ADA compliance, and now it's, it's being recorded.
I, I think it's if you make any changes.
Any changes, it is, if you make any changes. So it's all very dangerous changes.
Not going to look at that, opening it up or not opening it up.
Okay, because that's what's Harry saying, if you open it up, okay.
And we shouldn't make that choice if there's any, well, I don't mean to comment, I'll finish your comment.
Um, the only other thing, again, I appreciate the conversation about, we have to be careful about the costs. There's a lot of things we don't know, it could end up being a huge cost, and I just think we have to be really careful about that. I understand about the funding, sometimes corporations will match funds, and I heard you saying that, Carol. I'm not saying I agree with that, but there's a whole lot we don't know about this, so I think there needs to be further study. Again, I want to emphasize how important it is for this to be teacher-driven. It's the teachers who are going to be using this, and I want to make sure that our teachers always have their priority, and that we don't find that so many people in the extended community are using this facility, that it really limits our days and times that we can use the property. So I think that, you know, sure, getting a little money for people that come from the extended community is fine, but I don't want money to be our priority for the nature area. I think the nature area, first and foremost, like you said earlier, is for the use of Arinda teachers. Thank you.
Do you have other comment? If not, yeah, I'd love to hear from, and maybe Kathy could comment on the teacher involvement so far, and their reaction, but Stuart raised a question first.
I'll defer, I can.
Oh, okay.
So, um, the, and they can, yeah, has been a topic of the K-8 Science Committee articulation. This is a committee that is a subcommittee of the Curriculum Committee that brings teachers together from all school sites and grade levels in an effort to help us move forward with support for the NGSS. It also includes our teachers who've attended, not all teachers, but reps, who've attended the Base Side Partnership with Lawrence Hall of Science. And Lawrence Hall of Science has been actively involved with this. We've developed a science vision through this committee, and the science vision explicitly talks about what we want Arinda science for Arinda students to look like, and that includes that it's beyond the walls of the classroom. And that was from the get-go, that was something developed in January 2015. And so then it goes deeper to what that could look like, and the nature area was a primary source of that. So while it's been building at the board level, it's also been building at the teacher level in a different way. And so, you know, the goal that we have last year was to build a bridge between the discussions of the policy with what teachers were already thinking about and imagining to create with this resource. And not only the resource of the nature area, but with the outside areas of each of their school sites, because they're abundant and beautiful with creeks and hillsides. So that's really our, been our focus, is we're moving for environmental education. There is funding now that is surfacing through various organizations in the area of environmental education. The state has adopted a blueprint for environmental education, which is a guide for districts as they're moving forward. And so it, we, we have a curriculum, actually, on environmental education that was developed years ago by Arinda teachers. And that will be our next step, to look at that and see how we make it more current. In fact, with Friends of the Nature Area, when they were cleaning out the portable, we found even a, a previous curriculum, which was really fun, which I preserved, because it's really been enjoyable for our teachers to look through and see what was, and how things kind of come full circle, and, you know, we need to bring some things back. So their enthusiasm at this committee level, they report back to the curriculum committee, and as time moves on, it will get broader, depending on where the, the board direction is. That was your opinion?
That's exactly, just giving a good sense to us where that is, the teacher side and curriculum side.
I just wanted to dovetail on what Kathy said about funding and grants. In another life, I was a grantsman, and excited about helping the staff, looking for funds, for corporations and foundations. And I think there are a great many possibilities with this broader scope that, and vision that's presented here.
Thank you. Okay, since I can do it twice, I'm going to open for, we're in public comment again. Kathy, and then I think we should move on.
I'm sorry, I can't resist one more comment. The degree to which your teachers, over the last 20 years, have kept this program going, it's been elective, it's because of them that we have these programs. And so I think that they're going to be super enthusiastic to be involved in the committees and your programs, because clearly, they're the ones who have been keeping the curriculum that still exists there for us.
Well, the Friends are...
They'll all recognize one last comment, and we...
Okay, well, I just, the Friends have been a bridge. Hopefully, we wanted to preserve it to get, but we've all, we'd be happy to go back to be an auxiliary organization.
All right, thanks to everyone for the time on this. Um, that's the end of our action items, let's move to discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to take action.
I would like to move that we adopt action item H, the District Nature Area Policy, as amended by Julie.
Julie's text.
By Julie's text. And then, for, there are four, do you want me to read them, or are we just having...
I, I don't think we have to, we'll sit in the floor, discuss on the record.
There are four, why? I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pass is unanimous. Um, now I think discussion items, do we need another break, or do we want to jump right into? All right. Discussion item A is the actuarial study on other post-benefit benefits.
The actuarial study was completed, and it's an informational piece. You don't really approve the actuarial study, but we can have a discussion regarding the study. And I put together a PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the study, and...
We actually advanced the slides, because we're using a different device than we... So you're not in the board talk?
Yeah, let's see, let, oopsie, look at that.
Awesome, all right. I will keep my hands off.
The actuarial study is required, and is updated every two years because of a government accounting standard for Statement 45, which was passed in 2004, and the district implemented in 2009. And basically, we just need to recognize the obligation, the liability of the offering of post-retirement benefits, medical, dental vision, and how we have to recognize that in our financial reports. We do, we do provide this information, it's, the information in our audit report actually reflects the previous actuarial study. The next audit report will have the new information that's updated from this 2016 report, but it's also part of the criteria and standards in our interim reports and in our budget development. The post, the OPEB liability, there are two components... OPEB liability, there are two components, which is early retirement and post-early retirement. And it strictly just deals with the healthcare benefits of OUESD, Arinda employees. I want to, oops, what happened there? Oh, God. I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Don't give me the controls. Okay. Early retirement is post-60, pre-65. So in the situation where, when, yeah, I don't know why I didn't print out my copy, so I would go off of...
Do you want me to make this bigger?
No, no, I have a copy right here. So looking at early retirement, that is, like I said, pre-65, the district does offer medical, dental and vision for certified classified and management. There are also other components, like the duration of the benefits, the required years of service to have this early retirement. There's a minimum age, a maximum age, if dependent care is covered and a cap related. I do want to mention there's a bullet point down at the bottom that on the certified requirement for early retirement benefits that the employees must be, when they retire, must be on F-14 or above on the salary schedule to receive retirement benefits per the collective bargaining agreement. That is one change that I didn't put a, one difference that I didn't mark here, other than the number of years of service classified, oh, I'm sorry, the duration of benefits. You can see it's five, 10 and five with different classifications. Also, the required years of service is a little different for classified because it's, they have to be eligible, per's eligible, which is greater than a .5 FTE. And there's a 10-year and then eligible for classified and then five years for management. So there also is a minimum age requirement based on if you have, like on the certified, if you have 10 years, you have to be a minimum age of 55. But there is an additional piece that if you could be 49 years old with 20 years of service and 55 for classified with 10 years of service or 60, at age 60 with five years of service and in management's 55. But then there's, the maximum age is because then you go into Medicare, eligible Medicare. And that's why there's the maximum age. But this, when you're looking at the actuarial study, it's taking in consideration both early retirement and post-early retirement. Oh, why doing that? Are you doing it now?
Well, you did it, but I had made this a little larger.
Oh, okay, so...
Before you, could I ask a question first?
Sure.
You moved to post.
Going back.
Yeah. Could you explain the district cap numbers and how they're derived? In other words, are those adjusted in any way or those, where do those come from?
They're currently in our collective bargaining agreements.
That's what I thought, so, okay, so...
And so if a retiree does retire at this amount, this is the amount that they would use. If the collective bargaining agreement were to change, say, for example, if the cap were increased, it wouldn't be increased for the retiree that retired at a certain time at this rate. So we do keep track of the retirees that had a specific cap from many years. So at this point in time, it's just showing what the district has.
Showing what that particular agreement has.
And then that column is $125 cost on the prior slide. Is that a monthly cost, an annual cost?
That is per month. Okay, and then the post, so after meeting the, after meeting the Medicare age, if the employee continues to receive medical benefits through our plan, which is through CalPERS, our medical benefits, this does not include dental or vision, but, you know, they can participate, they would be paying on their own. But the medical benefits, there is, there is a cost to have this coverage, but there's, it's called a minimal essential cost and it's a per monthly rate. So we're just looking at, it is just medical, it's not medical, dental vision. The duration of the benefits is for as long as they maintain on the plan with, on the district plan. And it does have a, because you could actually retire from the district and not be eligible for early retirement benefits, but you could retire from the district and have post-retirement benefits. You may not be eligible for the early, but you could be eligible for the post once you reach minimum age 60, well, 66 is when, you know, 65 was considered 66 Medicare age, but you have to have 10 years of service for certificate, classified or five years for management. So if you don't qualify for the early, you still require, can be eligible for this benefit. And there is no maximum age and dependent coverage is available, but there is still a cap that is implemented and for each participating retiree, there is this district cost, which is a, is a, almost like administrative fee, basically, but for certified, it's $125 and management's $125. But classified, because classified employees pay into FICA, we do get some Medi-Cal reimbursement, but the rates are from between 270 and 320, but we do receive a, about a $15,000, it's been averaging about $15,000 to offset. So it's about, so I always, you know, just like to say, you know, it's $125 per month, per retiree when we, when I look at these costs. And, that's a great sentence, thank you.
So are you saying that if you're post-65 and you're a certified employee, you only get $125 a month?
No, that's what the district pays.
That's our cost. Yeah, the district pays $125 a month, but if you're classified, you, the district is paying?
It varies because on classified, they pay into Medicare Part D, thank you. And they have a tiered rate, so you can have single family, two-party and certified management is only single-party for that cost. So it's if one person is covered and they have a whole family, it's still only $125. But if it's classified and you have a two-party or family, it varies. They have a varied rate. It's a little complicated when you're looking at what kind of makes up, what makes up the cost to the actuarial study. So I wanted to be able to show you the early retirement, which is something totally separate, and then post-retirement. Let's see here. I wanted to, you know, just to, when you're talking about the lifetime benefit and what the cost is, it's this, it's this monthly fee. It's basically a fee, but it's actually, you know, we just call it, it's a monthly benefit for every retiree the district pays. And it didn't used to be a problem back in 2004 when it was only $16, but our, the new rate that's posted for 2017, it's $128. So, you know, it just keeps rising and rising and that's something that, you know, takes into consideration. But, let's see here, what else? Annually, this is updated every July 1st and...
January 1st, right?
January, I said July, because I always work on July 1st, this is the beginning of the year, January 1st, thank you. And as I mentioned, the classified does, rate does vary, but it's offset by a Medicare Part D annual reinforcement. And these are things that the CalPERS Medical Benefits Program establishes. We don't have any control of this by being a partner with them to provide healthcare benefits. This is just part of their agreement that we have, we are a part of. So I wanted, I wanted to show you with, looking at all that information it just provided, what does it, what does it look like? What does the actuarial, some actuarial study look like from 2011? Every two years, we have to do a new report and I just got this new report that is to be used for the 2017 year. That's why I had mentioned previously that the audit report doesn't include this information because this is to be included in the next, our next audit report, 1617. But you can see that the accrued liability, I'm going to have to, you know, just throw it out there, all these different terms and, and what the actuarial study looks at is, you know, is increasing over the years, but what has helped is that we established the trust fund and it's recognized in this new, this new report because in 2015, the report didn't recognize it, but now that we have it, we can recognize it and we can actually lower our accrued liability to be unfunded accrued liability, taking into consideration the irregulable trust that we've established. So that, that does help bring down that liability that has to be reported on our financial statements. But then, in order to address that liability, the district should be making an annual required contribution, the ARC, of these dollar amounts, which are the current reporting period at $1.5 million. Now you see, it's kind of increased steadily through the year. But the annual required contribution is, if you were, if you were to make this contribution this year and going forward to years to come and then adjusting your report every two years, which would of course adjust your ARC, you will eventually fully fund your liability. So, you know, the attempt to make your annual required contribution of $1.5 million, we have, we're almost there. Right now, we have $760,972 in a trust fund and the remaining is, we're not meeting the ARC. But, you know, that's, you know, something that we can work on. The number of employees during this time period has increased. I broke it down between retired and active because the actuarial study takes into consideration those two tables I showed you earlier about the early retirement employees who are actually taking early retirement and then the retirees who are Medicare age, but then they also look at active employees. Anyone that's currently working for the district, they do their little actuarial, focus, focus on their numbers on your age and your expected length, you know, how long you're going to live, if you're male or female. And they, they look at that as a component of the liability too. So you have actual retirees, which currently we have 107, it was 106 and then 192, but right now, we're 107. And then they look at active employees that have the potential of creating a liability and addressing that number. And our current active employees is 255. And as you can see, that's kind of increased over the time too. So when you take those two combined numbers, retirees right now and the potential of taking retiree benefits of our active employees, that's how you come up with your accrued liability, the $13,85,000, which kind of ties back to the very, very first top number, that $13,85,000 on the very first line, accrued liability. So, and I, and I just wanted to let you know, or add into this is, we're on a pay-as-you-go basis. If we didn't have a trust fund, the minimum, the minimum is that you're paying at least your expenses in your budget this year. And of course, you know, you do have a budget and a multi-year projection and, you know, so you, you're encompassing that cost. But the pay-as-you-go is projected for this year at $410,000 and it's roughly been, you know, in the three, mid to, well, it started out in 2011, 343, you can see, 462, 428, 410. It all fluctuates based on who's going in, who's going out, what new employees we have, how old are they? You know, it's a constant moving target. That's why every two years, we're updating this study to get this number and allow it to be reflected on our financial reports. And why it's important to be on our financial reports, I think was my next slide. Oh, let me give a little bit more information about the trust fund before I go to that. In February 2015, the district established a trust fund of $1 million. But since the establishment of the trust fund, there was a withdrawal of $214,00243, which was equal to six months, which is half a year of retiree benefits.
You mean pay-as-you-go?
No. Pay-as-you-go is in our books. We're paying as we go, just like we're paying salaries and we're paying our utility bills.
So the 214 was not credited to pay-as-you-go, was it?
Was it on top of that?
Yeah, got it, right.
Okay. So, since the deposit and the withdrawal, we did have a small investment loss of $204,000. It did...
$204.
$204 because, I know, gosh, me and my desk are wet.
I woke everyone up.
We did have a loss of, it was, it was over $20,000, but, you know, we've seen a game because this trust fund is in the most aggressive, a strategy one, two or three, you could change your strategy at any time, but we're in the most aggressive, which over a long-term, you know, basis, we should be earning some kind of income off of this. But because we did withdrawal, whenever you take a withdrawal, you have to, and whenever you withdraw, you can only, it can only be the amount that you're spending in your retiree benefits, pay-as-you-go. Can never be anything more than that. And I have to sign off.
Because I thought you said that it wasn't pay-as-you-go that you paid, but isn't the true...
In order to get a withdrawal out of the trust fund.
Yeah.
It could only be what, anything equal to not to exceed the pay-as-you-go. So that's like half a year.
So you can use that money to pay for health benefits?
You can offset the cost of the $3,700 and reduce your expenses for the year. Yes. That's the, that was the direction, the direction of reducing the current year's cost.
To use it to pay healthcare benefits.
Retiree healthcare.
Retirement health benefits.
But...
So you, just to clarify what you're saying, because we're making...
Yeah, we're...
You're saying the amount can't be nearly the pay-as-you-go amount, but it is an additional amount being paid.
Because you've already paid the pay-as-you-go.
That's what I think, but that's what I want to understand.
Okay, so we established a trust fund and there's money sitting in a trust fund.
Yeah.
And over here, we're paying in the, in our general fund, we're paying for our retiree benefits.
Yes.
If we wanted to, say, for an example, the district was in dire straits... If we wanted to, say, for an example, from a, the district was in dire straits and needed money quickly. You can withdraw from the trust fund not to exceed what you're spending in retiree benefits to help you assist the district and alleviate some of the pain.
That is the condition of a withdrawal.
Yes.
Aside from how you're using the money.
Yes.
Condition.
So didn't you just have taken six months and taken your six months' worth of payment and just paid your retiree health benefit from the trust fund?
Yes, and, and that's what we would do, which would in turn free up funds for the general fund. So this is where, this is where I'm, I'm having, wanting discussion. And so, um, we had the deposit, we did a withdrawal, we did have a small investment loss, the current value of the trust fund is $787,807. But where I am wanting discussion on is, do, are we going to further deplete or continue to withdraw equal to what we're paying in our general fund every year? Because this trust fund was established as a long-term commitment to earn, to earn, I think it was 7% that it was kind of averaging, and show a commitment to our retirees and to our future, our employees that have the potential of retiring with the district, that we're having, we are attempting to fund our benefits, our, I'm sorry, are, attempting to fund our obligation. Because what's happening is if I am going to withdraw, every time you withdraw, you have to realize any investment gain or loss at that moment in time. And the intent of the trust fund was a long-term investment strategy. And it would work, it would work for us to withdraw the money if this trust fund was bigger and it was earning and it could absorb the $400,000 a year. But because it's so small, if we were to, I did one withdrawal, but it was my understanding that every year, we would withdraw and offset the costs that we're paying on an ongoing, on a pay-as-you-go. So basically, we'd be zilling out our pay-as-you-go and putting that money in the general fund. But then this, this trust fund would not exist after...
A year.
Well... I'll talk with my teacher boy.
Well, I mean, we created that. The, the intent of the board at the time, of which I might be the only person left.
That's right.
I actually voted against this, but nonetheless, the intent of the board at the time was to put two years of pay-as-you-go proceeds into this trust account as opposed to what other, some other district set down, which is to slowly put money into a trust account over time and let it build. Our board decided to put two years of pay-as-you-go in with the idea that we would be paying the pay-as-you-go out of it each year and revisiting and putting the next year's pay-as-you-go in. So you were stacking basically your pay-as-you-go. So you would always have sort of this, you know, two-year amount in there that would be earning interest and then you'd be, you know. So that hasn't really happened, because only six months has come out of it, and it has never come to the board again.
And what's the philosophy of that, Julie? That I remember the, before time, was the philosophy of that two-year backup as a buffer? I mean, obviously, the, the, a trust fund doesn't work unless it grows, and you work off of its growth.
Right, which is...
But two years, was the philosophy of that, that if tough times were to come, you could...
I think the goal was to build on, you know, hopefully that interest would build on that amount and that you would keep putting money in. So you're still taking it out, but ultimately, over time, it would build, and it was putting in like an amount, some seed money, although with the intent of using it.
Yeah.
Which was a, you know, that's why I thought we should take a smaller amount and put it aside, and then every six months or so, look at funding it and putting some, and you think, you know, adding to it instead of constantly going into it, because you really can't build it up if you're constantly...
If it's a trust fund.
withdrawing it.
Yeah.
But, you know, so that, that was the intent. But it's just been sitting there without additions to it, and quite frankly, without much in the way of withdrawals either. So, um, we should figure out a strategy that would, you know, it's a big liability.
It's a huge liability.
Yeah. And according to this OPEB actuarial study chart, it's just getting bigger. You know, we've got, at best, a static student population, and we've got a growing employee population from 309 in 2011 to 362 now, with the potential of our number of retiree, retired employees of doubling sometime in the future. And it seems to me that what we ought to be doing is leaving that money in there and considering every year or so...
Making a contribution.
Making a contribution to that until we're much further along toward funding this $13 million liability. I mean, and the reality is, you're supposed to be trying to put your ARC in there, which is a huge number, but you can't.
And we take the ARC for 400, 1.5.
Or 1.5.
So that's why I think that early question was a good question. What was the philosophy of taking out that first six-month benefit amount as opposed to just doing the pay-as-you-go normally? Was that part of the original decision?
No, the, the original decision, and, and I don't know that the board had an understanding of whether you pay monthly or every six months or annually, but the idea was that that money would be two years of pay-as-you-go, and that money would be used for pay-as-you-go. So whether that occurred on a monthly basis or whatever.
But how did we come up with two, how did the payment come to 14?
It's because it was never done. And up at that, up to that point, we had six months' worth of known expenditures.
I think it has to do with turnover at our CEO position.
Yeah, turnover in administration, there was some, uh, timing of that. And then communicating it through the financials. At that moment in time, it was, I could account for six months, because in order to withdraw, I have to prove and I have to show the financial data to this ERBT program that holds the trust in order to withdraw money. I have to practice, show them we've had these expenditures. But when that occurred, and we had to take an investment loss, which was a lot higher than this $204,000, back then, it was much more, it was more like $20,000. But that's when it occurred to me that, you know, what is, you know, actually occurring here? What is, what is the real intent of what the, the, the intent of setting up this trust fund? Because if you're going to add and deplete, add and deplete, add and deplete, you know, it over time, you know, you're, you're having to realize these investment gains and losses.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, that $214,000, I have sitting. I have not, I have not used it to offset any costs right now. Because I wanted to have this discussion as to, you know, what should I do with that? Should I put it back in the trust fund? Do I really offset our, our costs? And take that as a, you know, what it will do is we'll reduce our expenses in the current year for retiree benefits. And then it, you know, it does free up some one-time monies. But I, I don't know or think if, if that was the intent, to continue that process. We could stop the process and, you know, take out this $214,000 or put it back.
The intent of the board and the direction that the board gave was that that money would be used and additional money would, the board would at least revisit...
Putting additional money.
Putting additional money in there on a regular basis, so that, on an annual basis, so that you were, like I said, paying out the, you know, the 2014 pay-as-you-go as you're adding in the 2017 pay-as-you-go, or whatever it is.
Or some equal percentage.
Right, so you were...
Yeah.
And you would have those numbers, right? Because that's part of your, exactly. So you would know those numbers, and you would take that amount, and that was the precise amount. That's why it's not just $1 million. It was just like a precise amount that was, that, you know, those two numbers added up. So until this board changes that direction or affirms it, then, you know, that was what the board said to do.
But Teresa, do I understand that your budgeting currently includes the full pay-as-you-go amount?
Yes.
Not including this money that you have set for the start?
You are correct.
So by changing direction at this time, it would not be negatively affecting your budget for this year or even the next two years?
Well, I'm...
This $214,000 is sitting in a reserve. I still have budgeted the $400 and something thousand dollars for this year. This money is waiting for further direction. I just felt that discussion needed to occur and to get, you know, a strategy, maybe even a written, something written that says, you know, how to move forward with the trust fund. Because there are, you know, different strategies that, to address the, the liability, you do have to show some type of intent to fund and address the liability. You, you don't have to try to fund the ARC every year, because that's impossible. How could you put in $1.5 million every year? To, to reduce that outstanding liability. But at least if you, if you showed some intent, like depositing the, the monies back in 2015, that was a huge intent moving forward. And in fact, I believe it was equal to the ARC at that time, one year's ARC, what the annual required contribution. So that was a very good step forward, and it does help with, on your audit report for your bond rating. But the, you know, going forward, from this point forward, you would have to come up with a strategy, you know, do you just want to keep it at that, whatever's in there now, and let it ride and let it incur the investment gains and losses? Or do you want to incur the gains and losses, but then also make a contribution? An intent of, you know, a percentage over, I don't know, whatever our ending fund balance is at the end of the year. If we have any money at the end of the year, we'll, you know, put a percentage or put a flat amount, like $5,000 or $10,000. There's also another strategy that districts use. It's called contributing a percentage of payroll, that you're basically, it's another payroll cost to the employer. I would, I would have to set up a, a new cost, and it's a percentage, and it could be like a .00 something. You know, we could come up with, you know, what that cost would be, but it's for all active employees. So we're, we're actively trying to take whatever active employees are earning. Now, there's a percentage, and then all of those, wherever those employees are charged to, be it the general fund or through mandated costs or through supplemental concentration. Each program is getting charged. That's another way to, to try to attempt to fund this, but making some type of attempt is, I think, a direction you need to go, because it shows that your current, shows to your current retirees that you're, you have monies there in case, you know, anything were to happen. It also shows future employees that, that may retire. But it also shows financially, you know, that we're addressing our obligation, that we know we have this liability, and we're addressing some, somewhere in our financials so that we can also help with the potential of going out for a bond. It even helps with our bond rating. So, you know, there's a lot to look at, but, you know, do we, do we need to change the investment strategy? To not be so aggressive as, as a, as a one, you know, because at a one, you're looking at a longer term and that you're gonna keep the money in there. There's a two and a three, you know, you get up three, one, two, and three choices. But you could change your strategy at any time. But, you know, getting something written that I can follow so that I can, or, or, you know, if there's any, you know, change in the board or change in the administration, that they're following something. Because right now, I don't, I do not have anything to go by other than that we established a trust fund. So I do provide a quarterly investment report on our LATH, because we do have monies that are in Fund 40 and Fund 25 that are with facilities, because if you have a large amount of money that you haven't used yet, you can put it in LATH, which is the local area investment fund, which earns a higher interest rate than our treasury at Martinez, which that's where all the money is sitting to do our routine operations. It's sitting in there. But if, if you have some large amounts of money, millions of dollars like we have in Fund 40, it's sitting in LATH. But I do provide a quarterly update on what we have held in LATH and how much interest it's earning. You know, maybe do something, you know, where I can provide a quarterly update on, on how the, the trust fund is doing, if there needs to be any changes. Because at any, any time, you know, the board can make that decision. You know, what if we do get into dire straits and, and you do want to make that withdrawal out of the trust fund? You know, you know, you know, just addressing it, at least looking at it and having it, maybe at the same time I talk about the LATH report, I talk about the trust fund. But having the discussion today is, is helpful, I think, on a few kind of levels, is talking about our liability, but giving me direction, you know, and maybe possibly putting that in a kind of written format of some kind of, you know, what do you want to do? What, what does the district want to do? And at this point, I'm open up for, you know, any more, any more questions. But this was my last slide, and just talking about, you know, why should, we should pre-fund, which means, you know, having a trust fund. Because you can't just have this money sitting in a reserve in a special fund within our, within our finance, within our Saks, reporting financial safety. It actually has to be an irrevocable trust in order to let, let it count towards funding, pre-funding an OPEB liability. But it does provide a much higher rate than we would incur anywhere else by setting it in a trust fund. It does provide a lower unfunded liability, because you subtract that right off of your funded liability. You get to get a credit for what you have in the trust fund. And just, like I said, it, you know, it improves the financial security for active workers and retirees about, you know, what are we doing for, you know, how are we going to fund this? So I'm just looking at having a discussion. It's, there isn't any action on this unless you want to bring it back. I do know we are, we have a budget workshop, study session, I guess, budget workshop, study session on February 1st, that, you know, maybe this can be discussed further and, you know, how you want to, you know, move forward. But it does definitely need some attention.
Teresa, can I ask you a question about the study itself? And what I always have trouble trying to determine is how much of that total, you know, $13 million total liability? How much of that, like, is there a way to find out a breakdown for certificated versus classified?
for certificated versus classified and also for, you know, the early retirement benefit versus the post-65?
Yes, there is more detail. Just looking at the 13 million in general, just right off the top, the 13 million, 8.6, almost 8.7 million is for active employees. So we're just, the actuary of the study is just looking at our current population and making a.
Right, and I'm wondering for those specific groups, like, can you?
The retired employees, how much of it post?
Retired employees, how much of that, how much of that money is, or even, I guess, active, they're making a determination, right, and they're, seeing that active employees will cost $3.7 million, they're making a determination of X amount is for after their 65 and Y amount is for before their 65. So I don't know if they provide that kind of breakdown or if they, if we could get that information from them, you know, especially for having an upcoming budget workshop, because it might be interesting and helpful to see that.
And the actuary of, it's, would come to a board meeting if that is something you'd like to entertain, but it is on page, oh, it's actually Exhibit I, which is the very last, second to the last page, where it does break down certificated, classified and management, and it breaks it even further down by active and retirees.
Exhibit five?
Yeah, Exhibit I, it's the last, second to the last page on the actuarial study.
I see.
But I can get, like, numbers, like, how many, how many, like, employees does that represent, but it does talk about the dollar amount. But it, that would be something that can be.
But it doesn't show the breakdown on which is for post-65 benefits versus pre-65 retiring. So the early retirement, basically, versus.
The, the actives are considered early and the retirees are.
Considered post-65?
Yes.
Oh.
Really? So if they're on their early retirement?
Because the, what I want to say, the portion of the, let me get it straight here. I'm getting late and I'm getting fuzzy. Let me bring that back with some further information and also break it down by the numbers, the numbers of employees that represent for the dollar amounts.
I'm wondering how we would feel by just putting off the rest of this discussion until the budget workshop since.
Well, I think we need to address it, but it's late and we're all tired and it does tie into budgets quite closely, and I do, it would be nice to have some of that additional information, but I do think, and we can't take action on this anyway.
Right.
We can't keep just putting off this discussion because we've tried to answer this discussion for like eight months and so we do need to make.
Right.
We need to make a decision, so if we include it as part of the budget workshop, that's fine, but we'll have to bring it back at the next meeting.
For me, this discussion, if I can jump in for a second, has redefined, the discussion's about figuring out what the problem is. And for me, coming into the discussion, I was more about the, gee, is an investment strategy, do we have, you know, I think we've identified a problem which is more fundamental, which is the board made a decision and because we did it in resolution and not in more specific form, it hasn't translated. And I think job number one is not to create the new decision, but to actually establish clearly for staff what our prior decision was and make sure we're doing it. Because I think we.
We need to do both.
Well, I do, I do.
I think at this, I think at this point, since the action that the board took really hasn't been fully implemented, part of it has been, but it hasn't fully been, I think at this point, we should just.
Stop.
Right. We're forming people here and we're just need to make a decision going forward. So we can't, we have to.
We have to.
We all now know what the issues are, so that's good.
Right, we've identified the problem.
Right, so let's hold what's been going on and let's talk about it as part of our budget workshop. Do you think we have this long enough time for it to do it?
Because, because once you, you know, have further discussion and take some action, I could provide some direction for myself to where, as I'm preparing next year's budget and the multi-year projection, that I can take these, any decisions made into consideration.
You need that for any city budgeting, right? You would need to know if you intend to make any other contributions.
You know, if it, if it doesn't happen, you know.
But even if we just take, even if we can't have full discussion at the budget workshop, we can still have this as like an action item, you know, on the OPEB trust account, you know, on the next agenda.
Yep.
Then we'll have had some conversation plus this and then hopefully we can just do something at that point. That maybe is, you know, saying, okay, let's keep the million in there and revisit it once a year or create some small amount or whatever or some.
Put that 200 back and.
Right. We'll be a part of it, we can make that kind of a decision.
Right, so the next discussion could, again, we're not gonna have an action item like at a budget workshop, but the next discussion could spell out these options you've already discussed with more detail so we understand them. Because you've done a nice job of bulleting that in one of the slides, is that, so that we understand.
Teresa could lay out for us a recommendation. So as our CBO, what would your recommendation at this time be? What would you like that to look like?
I would like that as well.
That we can discuss it at the budget workshop. Not that we would necessarily take it whole or in part, but we have it as a, as a starting point of our discussion.
Well, let's get some, are we ready, let me get some public comment, so then we move to discussion, ask our questions, public comment.
Charles Shannon, gay president, interesting discussion, appreciate it. While I was back there, I heard Teresa say something that I've known for a while, that's you can withdraw up to the current amount of pay as you go annually. So what I've been talking about with Catherine in the back is part of your 9% that you have in reserves can be sitting in the trust fund up to that amount, the $428,486, because you can withdraw that if you need to at a higher rate of return. And that's something I've never heard the board talk about because it's sitting there in an account and you said yourself that you can withdraw about CTA 2, and they said, yes, you can withdraw that amount, the pay as you go amount. So I don't understand why we're not dipping in to the 9%, we're not letting go of that amount of money, we're just putting it somewhere else at a higher rate of return over a long period of time. So I think that's something that you need to consider because why have 9% and this additional amount of money going into the trust when you can withdraw that? That seems unfair to us because in the spirit of the 9%, we're only supposed to carry an additional 9% for, you know, economic times if any required dipping into that. So I think the board needs to consider that, thank you.
Well, it sounds like, any, what, any further comment?
I actually have a question for Teresa. I guess I have to say, I wonder, what am I wondering about? I was wondering about the number of 362 total employees on the slide, mainly because we have 142 teachers, we know that, so this seems to be a pretty high number. Also on the slide, I was wondering about the fact that it states that an OEA member has to have worked at least to F14 on the salary scale. And I don't see any other criteria about, for example, CSEA members. And I'm wondering if there is any criteria, for example, my aide works six hours a week only in my classroom, 24 hours a month, she's been in the district about 10 years, does she end up qualifying for OPEB versus somebody who puts in far more time and far more years? Because criteria would be important for something that ends up resulting in such a high expenditure. And I've never heard any discussion about criteria, other than teachers being at F14. So that's what I'm wondering about.
Okay.
Can I say something else?
Just because you.
I also want to bring your attention, if you look at on that one page where she shows the increases over the years, since 2008, it's only gone up $3 or $4 a year, which is less than 3% for teachers.
Yeah.
So we're seeing that because we have a smaller pool of people and you're only paying out $125 currently, to us, it seems like it's not too bad on the teacher end. I don't really want to compare ourselves, but we need to really dip in and understand what can be done and be created so that we're, that it's, that it's fair for everyone. And it doesn't look like it's just a teacher issue. Because when I've asked people about, have you heard about OPEB? They think it's a teacher issue that's costing the district the $13 million. And when we look at the data back here, what we see is there's a huge expense for management because they pay out management's family, spouse and dependents, and it does that for CSEA members, but not for certified. They only give us $125 a month. So we think it's, you know, the weighting of it shouldn't be directed mainly at teachers and that's, that's what the public hears. And I just think that there needs to be a more accurate representation of what is the real cost and who's bearing the brunt of it.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why I was asking about those breakdowns.
Yes.
And I'm surprised by how.
So I think clearly, some of that information, I think it is a consensus that at the budget workshop, we'd like to understand a deeper delve on those numbers, not only between teachers and other staff and management, but also.
The post-65.
The post-65, exactly, what's going on in that dynamic.
And the breakdown by category, classifications within those post-65, pre-65, are the information that I always ask for to be in the actuarial report, but it never seems to make it.
That we should do that deeper dive for information. And I'd also say that understanding the numbers of employees, because I actually started, I didn't ask you the question, Teresa, that the numbers weren't making sense to me in terms of, of course, there's going to be increasing number of retired teachers because we all live longer and so, you know, there's going to be sort of an arc there. But then when I looked at the numbers, it was only increasing from 105, 106 to 107, the actual increase was current. I want to understand that better because we didn't hire 30 new teachers this year. But I don't think.
Teachers aren't leaving, so they're staying in place and aging basically as, as employees of the district.
Like you're saying they're active.
More teachers at senior.
Right, but they've been here five or 10 years.
Oh, that's it, they're older.
Right.
Yes, thank you, that makes sense.
So more teachers have been with our district for that.
And it's active employees, it's not active not qualifying.
Well, that's what, let's go back to that. I want to understand that, those employee numbers because it wasn't making sense. And I agree with deep dive, although that could well be the explanation. And that we'd like to see, Teresa, you're, you already on slide eight started laying out what the courses, potential courses are. I think we'd like to see those freshed out.
Option A, B and C.
Basically, A, B and C. I think what Hillary's saying, and someday we're gonna have to get to a recommendation or an action item, but I feel like first we need to understand the options and then secondly, at least to discuss, I feel like we need to make really clear what we did before because to take the next action. Maybe, maybe we give up on it, but I feel like we have.
You're not being clear. We put two years of pay as you go in. We said every year we would take out one year of pay as you go and put another year of.
If that was our board action, we should be doing it unless we change it.
But, but, you know, but taking that.
But I think what Teresa's saying is taking it out doesn't make a lot of sense because it's not budgeted.
Which is why.
So we have to find a one-term cost for 216, whatever that number is, $1,000, because she's already has the expense of the pay to go budgeted, so by now it doesn't make a lot of sense. And so we need to figure out what's going to make sense.
Okay.
Understanding.
Okay. Does that give enough direction for what we'd like to discuss it?
Yeah, well, we'll discuss more at the budget workshop.
Exactly.
Have some more information.
Thank you.
And it is a difficult subject, so not only, you know, trying to understand it, what all the numbers mean, but, you know, you, you know, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that you're aware of the implications on what's happening if you're just putting it in, taking it out, putting it, taking it out.
I have one more question, and that is that the terms of the retiree benefits that we're providing are negotiated, right, with both of the names?
Yes.
We can say no.
And we can change those terms.
No, I'm not suggesting we are, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, yeah, but I was correct, how I had a couple of slides there on the early retirement and also on the post-early retirement, all of those are negotiated.
Okay, thank you.
Just a correction, it's required under CalPERS, so as long as we're in CalPERS, we have to have it.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Right, thank you. Right, it's CalPERS ministers, I get it, thank you, just trying to understand.
Okay. We're in the home stretch.
We can do it.
We can do it because we really, we have one more discussion item in the consent calendar. Should we take the next, do you want to keep the homes, do you want to keep the spread here?
Yeah.
Yes, let's do it.
Everybody else wants to do it.